Train and the Commander. From last Monday to now, I see that you didn't like what was said, and you feel that your integrity was in question. So from last Monday up to now, has there been that much change? Is Pete Arriando fired already, or is he still on administrative leave? You might tell me, "Well, that's on the agenda." But you demand that we respect you. Well, who am I? The Bible says that John the Baptist was the voice of one crying in the wilderness. I'm the voice of one crying in Uvalde. Yesterday, we met with people there in our church, and I heard testimony of people, how their children are traumatized. They sleep with their parents, they do not want to go to school. But yet, you don't want your integrity insulted. The three failures, number one was the school administration. You guys failed. But yet, you're demanding that we give you the integrity, do your name. So what has changed from last Monday to now? Can you answer me? Can you give me something for the families?
We have set some meetings. They have been canceled due to legal requirements. So we are following the guidance of our attorneys, and we'll continue to do so.
All right. I just gotten to be friends some families that are not here today, that are really hurting, Dr. Harold, members of the board. They're hurting. One, yesterday had a complete breakdown. Complete breakdown. People that want answers. They're demanding answers. And this is what I am. I'm a voice. I had one of the family members tell me, sometimes I don't know what to say or how to say it. I told him, "Mijo, whatever you want to say, when you can't say it, just let me know. I'll be glad to be a voice for you." And that's what I want to be, a voice. Because these children are still hurting, Dr. Harold. These families are still hurting, and they want answers. They want answers. And to all the families, if you need legal representation, we're having a meeting in our church. We had one yesterday. We're here to help you. But, Dr. Harold, these families are hurting. They're hurting right now. They want answers right now. And to say that, you know, "Don't insult my integrity," and "Don't be negative," show us something positive. Give us positive. The last meeting that we had, some of you said not a word. Not a word. I even pointed my finger towards the DPS. My call doesn't, is not man enough to come and say, "We dropped the ball, we failed you." One of you guys said, "We failed you." Or they're gonna be like Uvalde PD, one police officer told me, "If I speak, I go to jail." Now, I know you can't answer for that, but that's what it takes. Give the people some answers. Give them some answers. That's all we're asking for. That's all I'm asking for. Give us answers. Talk to us. Talk to us. Just look at us. Look at the pictures. Look at the pictures. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, sir.
Next, I have Mr. Desi Riesel.
Thanks for allowing the opportunity to come back up here again. During the last meeting, I had asked for Annabelle White and JJ Suarez. And then after the meeting, we went out to eat. And so we're having dinner. Somebody reached over and said, "Hey, you wanted to know where Annabelle was at? Well, here she is." It bothered me a lot. I hope I'm wrong, Annabelle. I hope the post was from a previous time or something like that. But you went on, and you posted a picture of your husband and your children. Current picture along with the picture when they were, you know, when they were kids at UT. And you said, "I look around, I look around, and I know how lucky I am to be alive right now. My high school sweetheart, look at our girls, so thankful for this life, so grateful for him, them, and all our family. We're so lucky, followed by four hearts." I would imagine that represents each heart for one of your families. But not everybody's as fortunate as you, Annabelle. The people that came out here that day, they poured their hearts out. They wanted for you to be here. I don't know if it was something that was pre-planned, or anything that you couldn't have changed, or you could have called, rescheduled, or maybe have your husband go out there with your children. But I found that is totally unacceptable. When you went out and you asked for votes for the people, I think that they would have expected you to be here that day. Maybe gone back to Austin the following day, I'm not sure. But, you know, something like that, you gotta reflect and look back, and grow from it, and say, "Is this something that if I'm committed to the people?" Like I said, if I'm wrong, I apologize, but that took post. I verified it with different people. I actually forwarded that information to the staff, who forwarded that information to Dr. Harold. I explained to him, "It doesn't sit well." If you'd like, I'd give you in a minute an opportunity to...
I understand your opinion. I get where you're coming from. But that was my daughter's orientation. That was Parents' Day. And there was only one left. That was the last one for her particular college. It's something that she had worked for. The previous month, I had canceled our family vacation to be here. And I completely understand, but I did watch the whole video of the meeting afterwards. You know, I've only missed two other ones into other meetings, and one was because I was post-surgery from a pretty massive leg injury. And the other one was for a regional competition that my other child had. And I have served for five years, so I am committed to my place on this board.
Thank you for answering, Annabelle.
Sure.
I would encourage you that when something like this happens, you know, we asked, and everybody kind of shrugged their shoulders.
They can't answer for me. They can only answer for policy. But on something personal in my life like that, they cannot answer.
Thanks for the clarification. JJ, I asked for you as well on the previous meeting. And JJ, as we're having the meeting, JJ reached out to us through Messenger. And today, JJ and I had a lengthy conversation. Some things I don't agree with. I gave him some honest feedback. You know, something that he's gonna have to carry. You know, and again, I would encourage you to re-prioritize something. You know, I understand you were with the Astros, representing Uvalde. It's a big deal, JJ. Totally get it. But I don't think that it compares in the magnitude that it, you know, when the people, when these kids aren't here anymore. You see the pictures here. They can't speak anymore. But we're here for them, though. And that's just, you know, honest feedback on it. Seems like we're back at it again. We're discussing Mr. Arredondo, his termination. Is he gonna be terminated? What type of termination is it gonna be? Somewhere where he's dishonorable, he's discharged? Is he gonna be, is it gonna be some kind of buyout? It's like the same thing. It just seems that everything that's been shown up here, it's just reactionary. Just simple, you know, just instead of being proactive. You've known about this, you know how we felt about this. I understand procedure, I understand protocol. I totally get it. But don't hesitate. And my words of advice is, don't run the same play that you ran with Pete. As a board, hold each other accountable. Tell Dr. Harold, whoever's making the calls up there, and your attorney, they're not always right just because they have the law degree. Let them know what it's like. Let them know that these are the people, and I'm gonna get out there and meet with the community. And as soon as you start making the decision, like the gentleman said earlier, start communicating that message. Get out in front of the cameras, whatever you gotta do, take the hits. But, you know, earlier, we got word that Mandy, the principal, had been either placed on administrative leave, she had resigned. Rumors are flying around. It is what it is. If it's already taken place, just say it. You've already made a decision. Don't run the same play like you did with Pete, because it doesn't end well. It keeps on going, and you're gonna drag it out. The rest of the police department, the rest of the police department that are still on payroll, I don't see how you could expect the families to have the same trust, the lack thereof. Go drop off the kids at school. And the same guys that failed them, and ladies, are the same people that are supposed to protect them. It's like taking your child to the same daycare, to the same babysitter that just abused them. No one in their right mind's gonna do that. So evaluate that decision. You know, if Mr. Hernandez failed as well, then just replace him. Bring somebody else from the outside in, and replace him with somebody else that's a little more competent. And then have him reapply, have him see if they meet the criteria. The bar is set pretty high. That's what I have for y'all tonight, so I appreciate y'all. Thank you. Thank you for answering.
Thank you, Mr. Riesel. Appreciate it. Next, Mr. Tracy Burke. Sorry, ma'am. Okay.
Hello. The last time I was here, I gave up my seat so that the Garcia children could, for their voices to be heard. Mr. Harold, we all lost someone that day. We lost children, brothers, sisters, cousins, best friends, and even parents. Sir, lost 19 children. I know you care. I saw you attend my cousin Tess's funeral. We were sitting, or standing in the back, because there was not an empty seat in sight. Mr. Harold, I've come to you before with problems with my childhood at school, and you were the only [bleep] that you really cared. I ask you to put yourself in my shoes, in our shoes as a parent. Some of our children are not ready to attend school yet. Some of us as parents are not ready to let them go back. And let's face it, I'm sure some of these teachers might not be ready either. At one of these first board meetings, you spoke about budgets and buying the children all-new iPads. I'd like you to put them to use, and please ask that you go virtual. So we feel, at least at the schools, are safe, the junior high and high school included. Those are our babies, too. You have talked about hiring security, and I feel that no amount of security will ease our hearts and our minds. We saw so many cops, and all we needed was the army to be there, and nothing happened. So I feel like the school buildings need to be safe, and we're just not seeing it yet. I'm hoping that they will get done by the time that you say they will. Until then, I hope that you give us the option to go virtual, for whoever wants their children to go virtual. And if you don't plan on going virtual, just let us know ahead of time so that we, as parents, can make the safe choice for our children. And if we have to homeschool, then we have to homeschool. But I prefer that, you know, a UC ISD teacher teach my children instead. So please, just let us know ahead of time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Burke. Next, we have Ms. Berlinda Avila.
First and foremost, speaking from all the deceased families, we do not condone harsh words regarding your families. We want to say that we do not blame any of your families for your all's inaction. So let's recap. Two months later... Nothing has changed. So here we are, once again, banging our heads against a brick wall, demanding answers and accountability, getting nowhere. Because it's always something. Now you have to take a step back for due process, as you failed to file a complaint. Since Pete has his rights, I guess the rest of the UCS ISD officers do, too. Why didn't they exercise their rights to shoot and kill that gunman on 5/24? So go ahead and give all of the other UC ISD officers that were in that hallway due process now and file the complaint. So when we let them all go, it can all be done at the same time. We're not done. I hope and pray that you do not consider adding insult to injury and hiring anyone from Uvalde PD to work for Uvalde County Independent School District. Especially anyone from our so-called SWAT. We're not done. And as far as security, you said you're working on it. Just remember, it's not about extra security. Over 400 officers in 77 minutes later already proved where that got us. Priority, our main priority is to ensure that no one finds their way in there to begin with. We're not done. Mr. Jared Arthur has offered free labor. Take advantage of that and save yourself thousands of dollars. After all, we are Uvalde Strong. You may not be too worried about a walkout, because after all, we're just 21 families. There are hundreds of other students that cannot follow in a walkout. But it would be a shame if you let it come down to that. We're not done. I have stepped out of character a lot these past couple of months. Anger will do that to a person. Someone prayed over me a couple of days ago, and I found comfort. But don't mistake my kindness for weakness, because I'm still a pissed-off grandma, and I'm not done. No justice, no peace.
Thank you, Ms. Berlinda. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're not done. So... Somebody once told me, "Don't just come with gripes and complaints if you can't come with solutions yourself." So I have some of those, and I will get to them. Have a few questions real quick. The resource officer, are resource officers designated to be in specific places?
They were designated by the chief at the time throughout the school year.
Okay, but so they are designated, like somebody was designated to rob?
Not specifically to rob. They may rotate through the different campuses throughout the day.
That doesn't make no damn sense, but okay. Exactly. Because, yeah, where was he? In the beginning, wasn't there. Once again, your staff failed us. Y'all still haven't told us what security measures have been implemented yet. We've waited. Y'all still haven't told us anything. But what? We can't expect much when y'all can't even get y'all's damn nameplates correct. You expect us to trust you, that you will keep our kids safe when little things like that happen? I mean, this is ridiculous. And whose job was it to call all of these fine officers in? Because I see more officers here than have ever looked over at our schools. What are y'all worried about? Our kids are dead! What are y'all worried about? You haven't said anything to me. You haven't said anything to me. You haven't, you haven't. You tried to, but it's always going in circles. You have, you haven't, you haven't, you haven't. In fact, have y'all reached out to anybody? It has been two months. I'm waiting.
The last meeting, we did share some of the things that we did. We shared them with you. And then tonight, that's what tonight is, to continue those processes that we have in place coming in. And once we get them approved and everything, they will be provided to you. And that's why August 8th, that's our next meeting, to give you further updates. And if you're driven by Dalton, you'll see the changes have been at Dalton. There's no longer a fence there, because a new one's coming in. Stuff has been dropped off, and the work is beginning. So we did provide that last week, when we were here, if you recall. Of course, things take time. So we're gonna, but we're gonna continue. And that's why we want to have those committee meetings with you to let you know, so that way you know exactly what we're doing, because we don't want to leave you in the dark from it.
And to answer your question, I have reached out to people.
To me?
Not to you, sir, but to other families.
Has he reached out to any of y'all? Okay, so now, so what the hell? It's all good. All right, next, what qualifications must an SRO possess to be chosen for the job? Because it's not bravery, obviously, but I'm gonna let y'all speak. What qualifications are there?
There are several qualifications. The main one being to hold a peace officer's license.
That's all you gotta do? Okay. And you said that y'all were gonna add more officers, correct?
Correct.
Are these people trained by the same people that trained the previous ones? Because obviously, that doesn't work either.
Through the application process, we are vetting all those that apply.
I have y'all, actually, let me back up. You still didn't answer. What do y'all need all of these people for? What are y'all scared of? Okay, let me ask this, because, I mean, that was a simple question that y'all can't seem to answer. Who ordered them to be here?
Through our Department for Security. It had been agreed upon to have officers here for the evening.
Nice. Once again, showing that y'all care more about your damn selves than you do for our children. Two more things, and I'll let y'all be done. Why have y'all still not taken accountability for y'all's mess-ups? Can any one of y'all look me dead in the eyes and say, "Look, we messed up"?
I'll answer that for you, sir. I'll answer for you, sir. We weren't the only ones that messed up, but I will take ours, that we messed up as well. We did.
That's kind of backhanded, but okay.
But I'll man up to it and tell you, yes, sir.
So y'all, you're saying that y'all messed up?
We all did. Everybody did.
No, no. I'm not asking for that. I'm asking you. The school district messed up.
Everybody messed up. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, have y'all looked into the same protections and protocols as seen when you searched America's safest school?
What was that again? Can you repeat it, please, sir?
I said, "Have y'all looked into the same protection and protocols as seen when you searched America's safest school?"
No, I have not.
I suggest that that is something that y'all look into. It's gonna be extremely expensive, but our children are worth it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yes, sir. We'll definitely look into it, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Mr. Rosenberg Riesel.
Good evening. I'm gonna yield my time. Olvedo Carew.
Okay.
Good evening, school board members, family members here, supporters, school staff. Deanna Olvedo Carew. Once again, before you, as we continue to fight for accountability and justice for the 19 children and two teachers that were killed on May 24th. As some others that have come before you this evening have stated, the school district, and specifically based on this report from the special committee, indicates clearly that the onus for the failure of May 24th is on the shoulders of the UC ISD School District Administration. That would be our superintendent, and by default, his senior staff. People that are highly educated professionals, who obviously were hired because they should have had a skill set that was able to properly manage the work of this district. Dr. Harold, of course, is the top of the food chain for the district. But the seven, I believe, senior staff members who work with him also have responsibility for having made sure that every staff member of this district, that every campus of this district, that everything about this district was secure and safe for the children that parents send to you every day during the school year. And you failed. You failed. The things that were wrong, that facilitated the ability of that individual who broke into that, who didn't break into that school, walked into that school on May 24th, and killed 19 children and two teachers, was facilitated by all of the things that were not done by the employees of this school district. I would only imagine that that happened because there was no oversight. Administration was not doing their job. If you had been doing your job, none of those things that were cited in this report would have been told, would have been listed, would have been an indictment against the senior administrative staff of this district. This school board, the members of this school board that were elected by the people of this school district, those eligible to vote for you, you have a responsibility to those constituents to do your job, and take action, and hold accountable the senior staff of this district. We keep talking about Pete Arredondo. We keep talking about the four other officers that are still on staff for the police department. Those are the small fish in the pond. Those are the people that have no control over the bigger picture of this district, over what this report clearly tells us was the fault of the administration of this district. And it's hard for us, I know it's hard for me, to say that you need to fire these individuals, but realistically, that would be a very good start. This district needs to clean house. The issues that brought us to May 24th are deeply rooted, longstanding, and we need change. We are asking you, the school board members, to do your jobs, because this community is prepared to replace you with people that will. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We've got about a couple more left, so we'll get them through. We have Ms. Sylvia Uriegas.
I don't know what really comes up. I know what comes up here. I'm actually a school bus driver for the school district. And we were asked to go pick up kids at Rob, not knowingly what would transpire. And then, all of a sudden, I'm here transporting wounded kids to the ER. Then I go back, get another bus, and go back to Rob. I guess my concern was that we were not told what to expect, because they knew at 10 till 12 what we were going to. And all the buses got stuck, the chaos, the misinformation, miscommunication. And I just don't know why the bus drivers are not included in the trainings with active shooters, or where's the safety zone? Where do we pick up kids? If Rob, Dalton, or where? Even the new hospital. Most of us weren't aware where the emergency room is at. I think we need more information and more training, and include the bus drivers as well, because, you know, what if something happened on the bus? We don't know. Kids carry guns, or knives, or whatever. And I think we need more training, because we do carry a lot of kids, 30, 40, 50 kids sometimes. So I'm here to ask to include us in those trainings as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Uriegas. Completely agree, ma'am. Next, we have Ms. Deyanira Salazar.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Okay, thank you. My name is Deyanira Salazar, and I've attended every school here in Uvalde. I was born in Mexico, Villa Unión Coahuila, Mexico. And we came here when I was a mere six years old. I believe I was six or seven. But I attended Dalton for first grade, second grade... But I attended Dalton for first grade, second grade, Anthem and third also. And then Rob, fourth and fifth, Benson sixth, Middle School, which is now Flores seventh, and Junior High, which is now Morales eighth. And then we were the first class to attend ninth grade at the Uvalde High School. And so I attended ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth at the Uvalde High School. And that is one of the reasons that I am so attached to the district. And that is one of the reasons that I support the district greatly because I know just from experience that you cannot get very far in this life without an education at all. I'm speaking to everybody. Everybody. Thank you. And so I so I am very invested in the district because it is our children that attend the district. The district serves the majority of our Uvalde children. And so what I want to say is I want you to have a good background because I do not want you to I do not want you to misunderstand what I am saying. And and I know, I know that when we are completely involved in grief and we are mad and we are angry, like that one lady said, we can say things, we can do things that are completely out of character. And that's a quote. That's what she said. Completely out of character. And so without further ado, I have a letter that I wrote in December, in December. I sent it to the district because I wanted the district to know about this letter. And then at the last meeting, Mr. Luis, the man that was here, I believe, said that he had not received your email. And I was sitting over there thinking to myself, maybe they didn't receive my email. So today, I decided to print the letter and to read it to you because it is very important to me that they all hear it. I want every board member to know what happened to me so that you can be more informed and you can make more informed decisions for us, for everybody. Here goes the letter. On Thursday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, I had the most unfortunate meeting with Mr. Michael Rodriguez, the Deputy Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. He asked his secretary to call me and make an appointment to speak to me. And so the appointment was set for 1:00 PM on Thursday. I wrote thorough notes on Saturday, the eighteenth, and Sunday, the nineteenth, in the wee hours of the morning so that I would not forget any details. So I will here be describing much of what I wrote and what occurred on Thursday. And I will again say that it was Thursday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. I attended a training for math coaches this summer, and that was twenty twenty-one, called the MQI, Mathematical Quality of Instruction Institute. And that is what I'm referring to when I say MQI.
One minute, ma'am.
Do you want me to stop?
Interested in the people, yes, ma'am, please.
I want to give you a copy.
I'll take it from you. Don't worry.
I want to give you a copy and please share. Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Salazar. Our last one is Ms. Marisela Sanchez. Is she still here? Yes, sir, she is.
Thank you for giving me a chance to speak today. I haven't been able to make it to the other meetings because I work.
Yes, sir.
But I have time now. So I want to know, are you going to allow volunteers for this coming school year? Parent volunteers?
Yes, we do have a mechanism for parent volunteers, for parents to sign up and go through the volunteer training. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not going to lie, Mr. Harold, I'm not always at the school, but I really do want to get more involved just because, you know, all this happened and I'm still a little shaken. I'm not going to lie. My kids are a little scared and I think they just feel better with me, at least around for a little bit. But I want to know, am I only volunteering for one campus or could I volunteer for all the campuses?
When you sign up, you'll make that request.
Okay, because I have kids in different campuses as well. And I'm not here to bash anybody or anything like that. I just want to know, like, you know, taking it, now talking about next year, I have a daughter that ran into a little bully at school. He's a male. I've been, I know, I've always told her, see something, say something. Because I didn't grow up like that. I grew up, snitches get stitches. And I don't want that for her. I want her to be able to be herself because she's nothing like me. She's a whole totally different person. And I just want to know, she's talked to the counselor several times. She's talked to the principal. And it's always like he has issues at home, so forth. So I want to know, is DAEP still going to be an option for kids that act out at school?
Yes, we'll continue to run a DAEP.
Okay, because I do need to get with somebody to speak about what happened. I don't want her to go back to school scared. I want her, her grades were affected toward, you can tell when she gets bullied, her grades go down. And I can't stand it. I'm a straight A's or nothing. So I just want her to get back to where she was at. So yeah, I guess I'll just reach out a little bit more. I'll be here at other meetings. And like I said, I can volunteer. I actually quit my job so I could have time to volunteer. All right?
We appreciate that, ma'am. Thank you so much, Ms. Sanchez. Yeah, go ahead. Come on.
Board an opportunity to talk as well, so I'll direct it to each one of y'all since y'all haven't been very engaged. I'll ask Mr. Cal Lambert, what's the height of the fences going to be around the school?
I'm sorry, I can't.
The height of the fences?
Not tall enough. I can tell you that much in my opinion.
The ones that are going to be installed?
I have no idea. I can't answer that question.
Idea. Okay. So are you part of the, do y'all make decisions together or who makes the decisions here?
The decisions initially are made at Central Office by the staff over there. Mr. Harold's staff, as far as that kind of stuff.
Are we talking to the wrong people when we ask like these types of questions like security? Do we need to talk to Mr. Miller or who should our questions be directed to?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Annabelle White.
Mrs. White, who's going to be in charge of Benson?
Who are, that right now is, we're not sure, but Dr. Harold, at some point, there's a time when they come, and it's usually in the summer when we have these regular meetings, and they come and say, this is who is going to be principal here, this is who's going to be principal there. We, as a board, are in charge of policy and the budget.
Okay, because I reached out to the principal of Rob to ask some questions, but I left a voicemail and didn't get an answer. So I'm just not sure who to contact right now if I have.
I would call Central Office and they will direct you to somebody. Anytime you have a question about the schools in general, like leadership or whatnot, and you don't get an answer back, then you would call Central Office.
In the past, I don't know if we still follow that policy, but I remember that if they called a teacher or the principal, they had twenty-four hours to and then you need to Central Office.
Okay, Mr. Flores, we did file some grievances against Dr. Harold. Are you investigating that?
On that one, and actually, I was going to ask the board president because from the day you turned it in, we have ten days to act on it.
So are you doing anything about it right now?
Right now, I can, I think we're looking into it.
You think you're, if it's no, it's no. It's okay. You haven't done anything yet.
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you.
Not on the agenda.
I understand that. I'm just asking because it's been six days. I know you have ten days, but I haven't had any calls back, so I'm just asking. If you're not investigating it, I'm wondering if it's one person that's in charge that everybody might be intimidated of? But, okay. Mrs. Betis, will we have designated officers at each campus?
To my understanding, that's going to happen. That's with hiring the ten extra police officers. They'll be stationed at campuses.
Okay. Mr. Fernandez, are we going to have bulletproof windows?
That is the plan, yes, sir. We're looking into our company to find ways to put ballistic films on all windows to make them as safe as possible. Yes, sir.
Will this be before school starts?
Yes, sir. That is the plan.
Thank you. Mr. Harold, will there be metal detectors at each school?
We are looking at bringing in metal detectors and secure vegetables.
Would that be before school starts?
That is our goal. Yes, sir.
Fowler, will there be one point of entry at all the schools?
The one point of entry is our goal, similar to what we do here at Uvalde High School, is to take those people in on a one-by-one basis at the entry spot.
Are we set up to do that before the school starts?
That is our goal, Mr. Adam.
Thank you. I had one more question, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to say it right now. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our open forum section, item number two. We're going to move on to item number three, consent agenda. Three A, minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on May sixteen, twenty twenty-two. B, minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on June twenty, twenty twenty-two. C, item of information regarding maintenance and operations. D, item of information regarding transportation. E, item of information regarding SFE. F, item of information on the district's investment activity for June twenty twenty-two. G, item of information on the district's credit card activity for June twenty twenty-two. H, item of information for revenues and expenditures as of June twenty twenty-two. I, item of information on the tax collection activity for June twenty twenty-two. J, item of information for the district's federal program activity of June twenty twenty-two. Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda?
Yes, maintenance, C, maintenance and operations.
Okay, yes, sir.
The, I know there was the hiring our new office is going to cause a massive impact on our budget. And at the same time, we want to make sure that the buildings are maintained and secured. I mean, and I'm looking at the I'm looking at the facility assessment that was presented to us in task B back in February of twenty twenty. And there's a lot of millions that is required. Now, and the reason that, as far as the tax collections that we get for and everybody knows that we, right now, we collect, for every hundred dollars, we collect a dollar and sixteen. So if somebody pays three thousand dollars in taxes, we only get thirty-four dollars, six thousand, sixty-nine dollars. And the reason that I want to kind of like use that money just for maintaining and operating, I don't want the money to be touched for, well, unless we have to.
Right.
And I would ask for the superintendent to look into it, see if he can, we used to have an interlocal agreement with the city where they were paying for half of the resource offices when we have them, had them. And after that, we took over. And since we have over four thousand students and seven hundred and fifty staff, which is close to five thousand, which is one-third of the population of the city. And I think that the city might be able to go back and kind of help out with, I guess, the funding for the police since we have one-third of the population. And as far as the taxes go, they collect most of the taxes. The they collect most of the taxes. And like I said, I got a copy of the interlocal agreement and I'll give it to Dr. Harold so he can work on it. The other thing, and I think at that time, it was because of their budget, but I know in the last two years, the tax, for all the taxpayers, I know that the taxes, the last two years went went up like seventeen percent, so I know there's no more revenue coming their way. And just look into it and maybe they can help out with the funding for it's not just us. You know, on June the second, Medina County Commissioners were, they were discussing the, I guess, the district, six districts were requesting the same thing that I'm doing. And some of them, unfortunately, they, I guess, they went to the guardian program to protect the schools. You know, to me, that'll be one of the last resort. You know, I'm pretty sure that we have volunteers, veterans that they want to help out. Just look into it and maybe later on, just bring an update or a recommendation what we can do.
Yes, sir. I'll look into it.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second. I have a motion by Mr. Rob Fowler, second by Ms. Avielle Flores. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number four, items of Division of Administration and Operations. Four A, I believe, Dr. Harold, four A and four B will be now just a discussion item, correct? As our legal counsel has.
Yes, sir. Those will be items of information. And both of them have to do with the five oh one C three, which is going to help us build the new elementary school. Wash Gallegos is our law firm that we use for our school business, but also they have donated their time and efforts to represent us as a district in this process. Last Friday, there was a meeting. With the acts and efforts of that meeting, these two items now does say Wash Gallegos will be able to represent the five oh one C three and the district jointly as well as work on our behalf moving forward with the new elementary school.
Perfect.
Are they going to, I'm pretty sure they're going to, before they start the construction, you know, they're going to present some of the
Yes, sir, absolutely, we will. We'll have many meetings with the community, with the board, sharing renderings, getting input from our community, what is important to our community, what are our values here local, and how do we embed those in the new facility?
Any member have any other questions before we proceed? Go on to four C, which is consider approval of resolution to be forwarded to Governor Abbott. Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President. As we all know, May twenty-fourth, there was a tragedy that occurred in our community at Rob School, taking the lives of nineteen students and two teachers with a rifle that an eighteen-year-old could walk in and purchase. I myself, I'm going to recommend to this board that we sign this resolution encouraging Governor Greg Abbott to call the Special Legislative Session to look at this law and look at the purchasing age limits of this law and to, at least at a minimum, move from eighteen to twenty-one. There's no reason for an eighteen-year-old to have something like that. Mr. Board President, I'd like to make a motion that we pass the resolution to be presented to Governor Abbott to call a special session of legislature to consider increasing the age from 18 to 21.
A second.
For those purchasing for semi-automatic and assault-style rifles.
A second.
I got a motion by Mr. Kyle Lambert, second by Mr. J.J. Swadis, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. 4D, consider approval of updated 2022-2023 calendar, Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President, as we move through this summer, we are making considerable ground on improving and hardening our campuses. There's also the matter of bringing in portables and setting those up with Wi-Fi, intercom, fire, all those pieces that must be necessary. These will not be ready for our original August 15th, first day of school. You should have a draft copy. From August 15th to September 6th, the day after Labor Day. One thing that we affected, fall break, we will return from fall break on October 18th instead of the 19th, we'll begin Christmas break on December 22nd instead of the 24th. Instead of May 24th, however, senior graduation will remain on May 26th, the Friday before Memorial Day. So, at this time, I have before you a draft of a delayed start calendar, this will meet a requirement, 75,600 minutes for our students to meet that threshold as set forth by the legislature, and I recommend those adjustments to our 22, 23 school calendar.
And then we're adding five minutes to elementary?
Yes, ma'am.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Will that affect the early start, the normal early start of athletics and sports programs, two-a-days, those kind of things?
It will not affect UIL activities, they'll still start at the regular time.
But it will for junior high, because junior high is, is bound by UIL, so they can't start until school starts.
They won't, right, and those, those schedules will be adjusted, and hopefully, we'll be able to make up those games, those activities bound by UIL, and embed those later in a calendar for those activities.
Mr. Board President, I recommend that we approve the updated 2022-2023 UCISD school calendar as presented.
Second.
I got a motion by Ms. Annabelle White, second by Ms. Javier Flores, any further discussion? Hearing none, entertaining motion, all those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to 4F, item of information, whoa, hold on, I lost my face, please hold. Yes, E, yes, E, item of information of summer 2022, district updates and changes, Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President, I believe there should be, our audience, a PowerPoint that should be listed up here, there you go. All right, so what I wanna share with you tonight is some of the things that we have embedded at this point as we move forward, some things you can see, some things are ongoing, and some, and at your seat, so you don't have to turn around, there is a document that looks something like that at your, at your place. So areas that we want to talk about, social emotional support for our students, campus safety and security, and where are we at on our campus readiness as we move forward? So first, on social and emotional support, I wanna mention Nikki Henderson is our Director of Social and Emotional Recovery Efforts, she has been working closely with many of the support groups in getting dates and opportunities for our community and training before school starts, but also, once school starts, we'll have many supports for our teachers and our students as school starts. So, one of our goals is to add a school counselor to each campus in the district, and two more at the high school. We're wanting to add five more licensed counselors, social workers, allowing one to serve each campus on a full-time basis. We're wanting to add five more, excuse me, comfort dogs will be available on each campus for the first few weeks of school, beyond that, depending on the availability, and we are going to continue to work with our community services as we move forward, supporting our families, supporting our teachers, and most importantly, supporting our students. Some of the things on the social emotional support piece, Texas Child Health Access Through Telemedicine, this is through the UT Health System, this online access, it'll be online access for psychiatric services, as well as other counseling services that we do not have access to here in Uvalde at this time, this will help bridge a gap, but once those contacts are made, face-to-face appointments can be made through that T-Chat partnership. Another, another piece is the Rhythm App, this app will be on each student's iPad, it will do morning assessment, kind of a daily check-in to ask the student how they're doing, how they're feeling, and based on the responses, they can get feedback either through the app itself, but also, if a child or a class as a whole has an ongoing situation that needs closer look, it will inform the leadership team of that campus or, of what that class is feeling, or that group. We are also looking at communities and schools, our partnership with communities and schools, which will allow for behavioral health support for our students, and we want to have a member from communities and schools on each one of our campuses throughout the district. In addition, prior to the beginning of school, we'll have staff training and support, Dr. Julie Caplow with the medicals, with, excuse me, with the Meadows Mental Health Policy Institute will provide training, training in the area for trauma and grief component therapy training, that will be delivered to secondary counselors on August the 1st and 2nd, bounce back will be presented to the elementary counselors on August the 8th and 9th, and trauma-formed care training for all UCISD staff prior to students returning to school will also be presented in preparing our staff for the return of our students On August 29th and 30th, we will have a group come into Uvalde solely for Uvalde on Capturing Kids' Hearts, it's something we looked into earlier, it's a training that's going to be the entire, the entire day, we have gotten exceptional feedback on this training and relationship building between staff, students, and parents. We'll also have Dr. Eli Zambrano, co-author of Comprehensive School Counseling Programs adopted by TEA, he'll continue to work with our staff here at UCISD, and we'll continue our collaboration with Northside ISD, their counseling staff, they've been a great partner throughout the summer, providing many lessons and providing services to our staff and our students as well. Parent, parent support and information, we've got the Children's Barrio Center here in Uvalde, it's at 221 North Getty Street, there'll be sessions prior to the school starting or right after school starts, but that has been set up there at 221 North Getty, please take advantage of these services, they've been a great support and a great partner with our community and our, our teachers and staff. Campus safety and security, I know this is what's on most everybody's mind, and let's go through these. First, fencing, Design Master, it's a manufacturer of an eight-foot non-climb fencing material, if you've gone by Dalton, as you mentioned earlier, the existing fencing has been pulled up, and we should be on target tomorrow, based on dig test, to start setting holes, digging holes and setting concrete for that fencing. That Design Master fencing materials have been ordered for Batesville, Benson, UDLA, Flores, and Morales Junior High, that PO has been submitted, and we are waiting for that to come, Dalton, we have that, that fencing material here in Uvalde, and be delivered soon when it is necessary to stand that up. A contractor has begun, they began work today, cameras and videos, or video camera systems, that arrived today at our warehouse, installation should begin tomorrow on that. In addition, entrances, entrances was a thought, a question earlier, we are setting up single-point entrances throughout the district for visitors. Once school has started for the day, then we will have just one point of entry for any and all visitors as they approach campus. It may be, I know the Morales Junior High, that point of entry will change, it will be a new location, but we'll get all those points out to you, Batesville will be a new location, but we want our parents, our staff to have these points of entry, secure points of entries through the school day, through the school year, and as we move forward. Communication, we are doing a Wi-Fi audit, which begins tomorrow on all of our campuses, we wanna make sure that people have access when they need access. We talked about police a little bit earlier, I am visiting with some outside police chiefs to come in and guide us through reorganizing and taking best practices so that our department can have best practices. Can guide us through that process, I've heard earlier about, are we hiring local, some of the applicants we've had are local, some of the applicants we've had are not local, but I am looking, I've talked to two today, I've got more meetings tomorrow with them on the phone, but they are here to help. Texas Department of Emergency Management, NIMKID, Chief of TDM, and Susanna Jones, I've talked to them every week and pretty regularly, we talked to them about the fencing materials, contractors, doors, hardware, all sorts of things that they can assist us with as we move forward as quickly as we possibly can, but one thing I have talked to them and repeatedly asked and requested are to have 30 to 40 DPS officers here the first day of school and throughout, I won't say throughout the school year, but I do expect to have a strong showing throughout the school year until we feel there's a time when maybe that can change, that'll be an ongoing conversation, I don't have a date, I don't have what that would 100% look like, but just know, we're working with NIMKID and Susanna Jones at Texas Department of Emergency Management to have state troopers here, we currently have them, and have them here the first day of school. Another thing we're going to implement, campus monitors, one, at least one person per campus to continually walk the campus throughout the day, checking gates, checking doors, interior, exterior doors, provide these reports of each day back to the administration on their findings, but to address what they find immediately if they find something that's not correct, but we want eyes on, feet out, people moving throughout, invisible throughout the day, and back up to UCISD police, our goal will be to have at least one, if not two, police officers stationed at each campus as we go through the school year. What was on our page yet? Training, extensive professional development and training on campus security, campus protocols, and campus practices before we start school, we are currently working with the Raptor system to prove the alert, and the tones based on that emergency alert, but we will do extensive and in-depth training with all of our staff at the very beginning of the school year. Campus readiness, as we've talked and shared, third and fourth grade will be going to Benson, we have eight portables that will be delivered to Dalton, I believe I saw the seventh one come down the street today, we had six, each one will be equipped with the Wi-Fi, intercom, fire alarms, all that is necessary for a regular classroom to ensure the safety of our students. Crossroads, which has been located at Benson, it'll move to the Oppenheimer Street property, and I don't know if everybody's familiar with that, but we own a little piece of property there with some portables at Oppenheimer Street. And curriculum instruction, what was at, which was at Benson Elementary, they are now going to the north building at Flores Elementary. We'll continue to add safety and security, metal detectors was asked a little bit earlier, we've got meetings with different organizations that provide metal detectors, and we'll get those here, and again, goal is by first day of school. Questions from the board?
Are you gonna do the, are you gonna limit the fire drills, and they all have drills, you know, because I know some of the students are gonna be going to counseling, and then it's pull the fire alarm, and then next thing you know, it's gonna trigger.
Yes, excuse me. So through the drills, we will continue to have drills, but the protocol will be set up a little bit different as we move forward. As you've probably heard out of TEA and the governor's office, there are new some safety guidelines that are coming forth, that'll provide direction and guidance for us as we embed those protocols, but yes, we've talked about, and through our social emotional piece as well, how to most effectively and most gently implement those without causing great concern. So we, that is on our list, that is our task, I, first thing we came up with, it being an all-announced type walkthrough drill with very little alarms, alerts, things of that nature, but just begin the practice and protocols of the movement through the campus.
Maybe, Dr. Harold, maybe at the beginning, when you start to implement these practices, that we just don't use it a lot, some way, how are we gonna contact the teacher, how are all teachers gonna know, coaches outside gonna know we are on lockdown, and try practicing it that way versus setting alarms and stuff that's gonna, you know, terrify the kids and the teacher, is it real, is it not real?
Right.
If we can just kinda ease them into.
Through the intercom system, conversation, general voice, as well as the walkie-talkies that we do use for playgrounds, but yes, as I mentioned, want to start very gentle as we.
Dr. Harold, back in June, I was wondering about some of our students who might not be ready to come back, and I don't, you know, as far as TEA and their virtual stand, I don't know what they're gonna decide for us, but, you know, one of our options I had kind of discussed with you was about homebound, have we looked into expanding homebound for our students who might not quite be ready to return to a standard, classic type of environment?
Yes, we have, and it's ongoing, that'll probably be something I can elaborate more on the 8th.
Okay, perfect.
Dr. Garza is looking at the virtual piece of it, trying to get something through TEA that will allow us to do a virtual setting.
Okay.
No guarantees, we're asking, it doesn't exist right now, but there are some other virtual networks that maybe we can help our families with if that is not something we can afford, but we'll have options for our parents to bring to them.
Okay.
You mentioned homebound specifically, yes, we are looking at that aspect, homebound through special education 504, depending on the level of need for each and every student.
And will we make it somehow publicly known what it is, because they all have requirements to, I suppose, to meet, and so, will we make that as readily as possible, well, as soon, I suppose, on a timeline, so if we have a family who, for whatever reason, doesn't like virtual learning, but would rather have that kind of one-on-one, that kind of homebound gives them, obviously, not every day, but nonetheless, has that contact with an educator, they know what steps it is they need to take to be led into that program?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Harold, on the Capturing Kids' Heart, that district-wide program on the 29th and 30th, what's that gonna look like? Eight-hour training, you as mentioned? Eight-hour training, you as mentioned?
It will be, it'd be age appropriate. So high schools won't look like elementarys, elementarys won't look like high school.
They'll go to their particular campus to have...
We'll bring them together as a group. I know Mr. Rodriguez has definitely been a part of this.
Correct. Each campus will have their own training, so it's a two-day training and it'll be on the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, so they'll have their own trainer that will actually follow them throughout the year and meet with the principal and the campus will create a team of champions, process champions and they'll be following through, making sure all the strategies are being implemented on a daily basis.
We'll check list, if you will.
Correct, yes.
Dr. Harold, just going back on the fire drills, when we do have those, can we just make sure that we have command presence of law enforcement around the area when the kids are out, outside the buildings? Just make sure we have that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Harold. Moving on to item four F, item of information on policy update 119.
Yes, Mr. Board President, as you know, policy gets updated periodically and currently we have update 119 that has been sent to the district as we have and do the first time it's presented to the board. It is the first reading, no action taken, it's anonymous information only, and then we will bring update 119 back in August for approval. If, as you remember, just let me remind you that the legal side, when you read through that update, that is legal, it's for reference only and also to help maybe craft some thought going into the local policy. But the local policy is where we do have some flexibility if we want to amend, change some of the wording in that, we'll bring that back in August and discuss that if there are any changes to it. This has been prepared by Tasby. We contracted Tasby for our policy updates and once this is updated, it will go online as well.
Thank you, sir, and I think there's quite a bit of changes this year.
There are a lot of them.
Yes, and I would anticipate many changes on down the road too.
Yes, sir, definitely. All right, thank you, Dr. Harold. Going on to four G, consider approval of student code of conduct?
Yes, Mr. Board President, the twenty-two, twenty-three student code of conduct, we looked at it some last or maybe a couple of meetings ago. I know Mr. Miller has worked with Ms. White and Ms. Pettis to review the changes. I believe it's at your position now, administration recommends student code of conduct as presented in your board packet.
The, as far as the, remember I asked that question about punishments, make sure they're consistent or somehow, I mean, I'm pretty sure you have a committee or somebody that, I don't want athlete to get less punishment for the same, for the...
Yes, sir.
No, no favor system, you know?
I have some questions, sir.
Yes, sir.
On page four of the student code of conduct, it says that it's an outgrowth of collaboration among district, campus staff, parents and other community members. Are any teachers, current active teachers included, in that review process? I mean, they're the ones, they're the ones that have to deal with it every day, so I'm wondering.
Yes.
There were?
Yes, there were.
Under, on page fifty, under number one, it says, the sentence says, "Students are not permitted to wear pajamas or any other type of sleepwear at school during the regular school day, school-sponsored activity, so on and so on." That's marked out, does that mean they can?
We're not gonna have students wearing pajamas. I believe where that came back was to the discretion of the campus principal and their oversight.
So they're allowed to wear pajamas or they're not?
No, I don't expect them to wear pajamas at school.
Sir?
I don't expect them to wear pajamas at school.
But it didn't say that to me, that's why I'm questioning it.
So it doesn't, it doesn't say no pajamas, but when you look at the rest of it, right, so what we look to eliminate were one-by-one little things that, you know, you can't have this or you can't have a red or whatnot, but if you look at it later, it's about, you know, verbal language, keep this covered, that kind of things. And so putting in pajamas wouldn't necessarily cover that. But it's up to, in there, the campus discretion, the administrator. Some parents' joggers might look like pajamas.
Pajamas are pajamas, joggers are joggers. Can't imagine letting my kid go to school wearing pajamas unless it's a specific activity.
Right.
I mean, that's why that's in there, but now it's taken out. I don't agree with that.
Any further questions? Entertainer motion?
Mr. Board President, I make a motion that we accept the student code of conduct for the year 2022, 2023 as presented.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Ms. Annabelle White, got a second by Ms. Laura Perez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
No.
Okay, I have one.
Against, Mr. Cal Lambert.
With Ms. Annabelle, Mr. Javier Flores, Ms. Laura Perez, Rob Fowler and Mr. Suarez, all in favor, and Mr. Cal Lambert against. And motion passes. Moving on to five, items of division of business and finance, five A, consider approval of accounts payable checks for June 2022. Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President, the checks and the bills should have been provided to Mr. Cal Lambert and Mr. J.J. Suarez, accounts payable listing, and I recommend that we pay our bills for the month.
Yes, sir, we, I've reviewed the accounts payable and I make the motion that we approve the accounts payable for this month.
A second. Got a motion by Mr. Cal Lambert, second by Mr. J.J. Suarez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Item five B, consider approval of updated vendor list, Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President, there is a list of vendors that we approve each year and if we pay collectively more than fifty thousand or a one-time payment, twenty-five thousand, they go on a list to be approved by the school board. There are two that we need to add to this agenda that's ongoing, one is fire troll protection systems and one is HED credit receivables. I recommend approval of this updated vendor list.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion that we approve the updated vendor list as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Laura Perez, second by Mr. Javier Flores. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Going on to five C, consider approval of general fund budget amendment number eight, Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President, everyone at your seat should have something that looks similar to this and top, it's got the general fund budget amendment number eight and what I need approval to do out of, we're going to need to take a little over a million dollars out of fund balance, one million, eighty-five thousand will go into plant maintenance and operations. That will be to move the portables from San Antonio to Uvalde and then it will be reimbursed at a later date when we receive serve grant funds to that exact amount and then also item or expenditure fifty-two, security and monitoring systems, the purchase of seventy-five thousand dollars in equipment, once again, that will be reimbursed through the Project Serve grant, but we need it, take it out of the fund balance at this point, but will be reimbursed. Need approval of budget amendment number eight.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion that we approve the general fund budget amendment number eight.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Okay, through the procedure. Got a motion by Mr. Rob Fowler, second by Mr. Cal Lambert. Any further discussion?
I just, can you remind me, Dr. Harold, what Project Serve is, what that grant is?
So Project Serve is one of the state, sorry, state grants that we'll receive, I believe that one totals one point five million dollars.
Okay.
And then that will be something we can apply for annually.
Annually.
This will be for this fiscal year, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, and then we'll be able to apply for that again in twenty-two, twenty-three.
And that's state?
State.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Ms. White. Anybody else, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item five D, consider approval of food service budget amendment number three.
Yes, Mr. Board President, food service budget amendment, as you can see, and again, you should have a sheet that looks similar to that. Food service budget amendment number three, we need to increase revenues of fifty-nine thousand seven forty-eight based on a reimbursement that we received just recently and then we'll also increase food service costs by fifty-nine thousand seven forty-eight. So it does not affect the bottom line anywhere at all and then once we have the final audit, that will tell us where our fund balance ends for food service.
Are we still feeding the, or providing the food for those two other schools and the daycare, three day cares?
Outside of our district?
Yes.
Yeah, we are, there's a contract between SFE and those, those units, they do not come through UCISD.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion that we approve the food service budget amendment number three.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Rob Fowler, second by Ms. Javier Flores. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item five E, consider approval of donation from Odessa Boys.
Yes, Mr. Board President, this group sent seven thousand five hundred dollars to UCISD and in more particular to the athletic department to cover the fees of all summer camps for the students that sign up and attend summer camps. I recommend we accept this generous donation from Odessa Boys.
Thank you, thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve the donation from the Odessa Boys to fund those particular programs.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Rob Fowler, second by Ms. Laura Perez. Any further discussion?
Just to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Odessa Boys, really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item five, to item six, items of division of curriculum and instruction, six A, consider approval of communities and school of San Antonio service delivery agreement, Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President, this agreement, this contract with communities and school, one of the things I mentioned earlier that we're setting in place and our goal is to have an advocate or a person on each campus from communities and schools to help our families who need that extra counseling, who may find it hard to get to those counseling pieces and this group will help navigate that maze and I do recommend that we, for twenty-two, twenty-three, the school year total cost is five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. It'll either paid for Voca funds, that is a federal grant, or Project Serve, which we mentioned earlier.
And Dr. Harold, just a reminder on that, remember, these communities and schools informed us, they secured a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar donation, so the district's only looking at around three-hundred thousand, so...
Thank you.
Yes.
Slid my mind, thank you.
I entertain a motion?
Mr. Board President, I make a motion that we approve the communities and schools of San Antonio service delivery agreement.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Rob Fowler, second by Mr. J.J. Suarez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Six B, consider approval of Texas child health access through telemedicine, TCHATT memorandum of understanding for provision of services, Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President, this is another piece that I've mentioned earlier in setting up for this upcoming school year to support our kids, to support our community and acronym T-Chat, but it allows our students, our community to access some psychiatric, some counseling services through the UT Health Science Center that we don't have access to here in Uvalde. But once that access is made, they can set up times for face-to-face meetings, so it'll start with a telehealth style encounter. I recommend we approve the memorandum of understanding and for twenty-two, twenty-three, it will come at no cost.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion to approve the Texas child health access through telemedicine memorandum of understanding for provisions of services.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. J.J. Suarez, second by Mr. Rob Fowler. Any further discussion?
I have a quick question, Dr. Harold. So this starts out as telemedicine, will they be able, if you know this answer, if not, if maybe you can get that for us. So it starts out as telemedicine, which I think is wonderful because it is true, rural communities, this is something that we lack, our psychiatric and behavioral health services, but what if the psychiatrist or behavioral health specialist sees maybe a need for in-person? Will that, will this help us facilitate that for our students?
We can definitely be part of that facilitation to make sure they get face-to-face. If it's transportation needed, absolutely, we'll be there for them, if that's what you're asking.
Okay, thank you.
Great question, Ms. White. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Six C, consider approval of rhythm program memorandum of understanding, Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President, this also, this MOU is also one that will provide support for our kids. It'll do kind of a daily inventory of where the child is as far as emotional, social needs at that first, first look at the day. This was also one of the programs that I'd mentioned that we're embedding in our campuses. This will allow our staff to see what we need to do to intervene for our kids, whether that particular day, as a group or over time. This MOU for twenty-two, twenty-three comes at no cost and I didn't mention that on the T-Chat, it's at no cost. It's not that they're cheap or free, it's that they are donating their services for this upcoming school year. Just wanted to make that point of clarification, so this will be something we can use with our kids, help inform our parents, help inform our staff, kind of taking, measuring where the child is at each day. So I recommend rhythm services to be provided to UCISD at no cost for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion that we approve the MOU for rhythm.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Annabelle White, second by Ms. Javier Flores. Any further discussion?
Yeah, all these programs, I take it they're gonna be on the UTD website and maybe send letters to the parents or, I mean, make sure they know they're available.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, we need to communicate that, inform that and if the parents would like to have a meeting or a work session to understand what that app looks like and what it does. Yes, sir.
And I believe this is getting downloaded on all their iPads as well, correct?
Yes, through their iPads, that's where they'll access that app.
Great. All right, moving on to item seven, no wait, I need to do approval first. All in, hearing no more questions? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Now going on to number seven, superintendent's report. Now going on to number seven, superintendent's report, 7A, future board meetings. Dr. Harold?
Yes, Mr. Board President. Our regular school board meeting is scheduled for August the 15th. However, as we told our community, we plan to have one August the 8th, the community count-hall style again, but also with updates in what we've completed, where we're at, what's still left to do, and continue to keep our community informed.
Mr. Board President and Dr. Harold, fellow trustees, I do have a commitment on August the 8th. God willing, I can't attend August 15th, but I do have a prior commitment on the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler.
Sir, I do, too. I will not be, I won't even be in town, will not be here.
Okay. If need be, we can maybe look at a different date if need be.
That was a suggestion, or if anything, I'll wait and hear other suggestions.
Yeah, we can have Ms. Mika Sanchez kind of send out a survey when everybody's available that we can be sure to have the, the team here for the special meeting.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler, thank you, Ms. Lambert. All right, it is now 8:08, and we will move on to item rate, close session. A close session will be held under provisions of Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Sections 551.071, 551.072, 51, 551.074, 551.076, and 551.089, 88, 8A, consultation with the district legal counsel regarding real property, prospective gifts, and donations, security items. B, deliberations regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. C, deliberations regarding the deployment or implementation of security personnel or devices or a security audit. 8D, deliberations regarding security assessments or deployments. It is 8:08, and we will now convene into closed sessions.